I'd like to follow this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We all good?
And then I believe she does the oath.
Yeah, she runs.
But it's already been done.
And Marlene did hers.
So we'd like to officially welcome, and I always butcher your last name, Mr. Sutton, right? I said it. I always want to say Stufton. To his first official meeting.
Great.
So thank you. Item B, election of officers. So number one nominations and balloting for president?
I would like to nominate Paul Shepherd. Anyone else?
Second.
I don't know if you have the second. Is there anyone else that wants to be nominated or wants to nominate someone?
No, you're right. Are there other nominations?
No one?
No one.
All right.
Sutton, Stufton has second?
Yep.
Okay. So what does that mean? Is he official?
I guess Paul's official.
All in favor? Is that what we do?
The clerk has to cast one vote when there's nobody else, right?
Clerk has to do what? We've never done it that way.
The hokey pokey.
I think he just becomes president. We never.
We've never had to have two. But it's a nice thought. Kathy was getting ready.
Just not giving this over. I'm taking this one.
Oh, he wants to gavel. Does he get to say he doesn't want to be the president?
Yeah, if he doesn't want to be.
Paul, do you accept it?
I accept.
All right, you want to do the oath?
See now, Mike, you're going to be reading for a long time now because you're always late.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that it will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the President of the Board of Education.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the President of the Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Do nominations through the balloting for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Jen Horsell.
Any other nominations?
Sherman?
Positive.
Michael?
No. No, I didn't say nothing.
Oh, he didn't say anything.
He didn't say nothing.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Jen, do you accept that?
I do.
Wow. All right.
Sweet.
We literally have to change sheets. White little moving.
But Mike's going to be Mrs. Horsell.
I solemnly swear or affirm that I support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that it will faithfully discharge.
And that it will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of the Vice President of the Board of Education.
The duties of the office of the Vice President of the Board of Education.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. All right, congratulations. Sign.
Oh, thanks. So Jen sits here?
I guess so. She sits here.
Mike already moved the sign.
Mike already moved.
No hesitation there. She was not going back.
Wow. The president presides.
She's signing. The reader's signing.
Okay.
Well, while she's signing, I would like to take the opportunity to thank Mike and Mike for three years of service as officers of the board. They've had some difficult times and they brought this school through it. So I want to thank them very much.
I agree. I'll take most of the credit.
A request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. No? Moving on. Now, before we get to the routine actions, do I read all those appointments?
No, you can just say where it says Roman numeral four, you can just read that and then people will just go through it. That's all part of the new york.
Okay. So routine actions, approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum for A through E.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion's been made. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Now we move to the regular Board of Education meeting. Request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Item four, routine actions, approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum. Item six, A through E.
Second.
Motion's been made. Any discussion?
Only that Karen is here. Karen, I don't know how to say your last name, though.
Bozacki.
Bozacki, so welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Abstained. Motion carried.
So Karen is on the list at D as appointing as a substitute, and that's because she's later in the agenda as a part-time teacher. Okay, item seven, new business, resignations. Item one, accept resignation that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of cafeteria monitor Esther Butera be accepted effective June 22, 2016. The Board of Education and the administration wish to thank Mrs. Butera for her 18 years of service to the district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Number two, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of part-time special education teacher Matthew Vogon be accepted effective June 30, 2016. The Board of Education and administration wish to thank Mr. Vogon for his service to the district.
Second.
Discussion?
Only that Matthew accepted a position in the DR of the Dominican Republic.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item three, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of part-time family and consumer science teacher Courtney Hanania be accepted effective June 30, 2016. The Board of Education and administration wish to thank Ms. Hanania for her service to the district.
Second.
Discussion?
Courtney took on a full-time position in one of the districts north of us.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Reform that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of mathematics teacher Allison Howard be accepted effective June 30, 2016. The Board of Education and administration wish to thank Mrs. Howard for her 10 years of service to the district.
Second.
Discussion?
Ellie took a position with Bosie's two as a staff developer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item B, appointments. What am I reading in those blanks?
We'll have to discuss to fill in.
Okay. So we're appointing voting delegates?
Yes.
Paul's been the...
You want to say that one, Paul?
Yes, I would like to go to the conference this year. It's right in Buffalo, so.
Yeah, that's a great thing, huh?
Okay.
Anybody want to be the alternative?
Mike, you want to be the alternate?
What are the dates on that?
Septem... I'm sorry, September 25.
October?
No, you know, October 25, 26, 27. Yep. Yep, September is Syracuse one.
Did Don volunteer?
I will probably be going if it's in October. Just checking the dates.
Me too. Twenty-sixth of October. Do you want to be the alternate?
I can be the alternate.
All right. So recommended motion that Paul Shepherd be appointed as voting delegate to the annual business meeting of NISBA and that Don Sutton be appointed as alternate.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
So now we're appointing the Board of Education subcommittees.
I'd like to remove that and have it be put on the August 10, that we will discuss it at the board retreat next week.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Item three, appoint music teacher. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Daniel Polino, who was initially certified in music, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the music tenure area for a probationary period commencing on September 1, 2016 and ending on August 31, 2020 unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only, except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section 312 of education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual professional performance review ratings pursuant to section 312D of the education law of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher should not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contract bachelor step two.
Second.
Discussion?
So we've only done one or two others of, under the new education law. So basically, when the board makes a recommendation for tenure in May, it doesn't necessarily take effect until, let's say, September 1. But there isn't anything that really happens between May and September 1. But now there is. Now what we're actually waiting for is that last year of the scores of APPR. And if those last year of the scores between that May and July or August do not come out to be effective or highly effective, then the board would have to come back to a motion to take back that recommendation for tenure and make a decision as to whether there's a fourth year or just a non-recommendation. So this is something very different for us. It's a second or third teacher that we've done this with so far.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
He's here.
Oh, congratulations. Is he here, Stan?
Wasn't he here? He was here. Was he?
Oh, no.
Getting nervous and laughing.
He was here. I don't know.
No, I know. Item four, appoint part-time music teacher. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Karen Bozacki, who is permanently certified in music, is hereby appointed as a part-time .59 FTE music teacher effective September 1, 2016 and ending June 30, 2017. Salary is based upon ETA contract masters plus 30 step one.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
And Karen is here. Karen, can you stand up for us? Welcome. Welcome. Appoint extended leave part-time special education teacher that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Sarah Fiorella, who is initially certified in childhood education, B through two and one through six, be appointed as an extended leave part-time .5FTE special education teacher effective September 1, 2016 through date of initial certification in special education. Salary is $95 per day, prorated.
Second.
Discussion?
So basically, what this motion allows for is once Sarah's pending testing, her exam scores come in, is for her to be hired as an actual probationary teacher. That's the only thing that we're waiting for. It could happen by September 1. It could be October. We've seen it go as long as April, but that was in fax, and it won't be that long in September. So it's just a waiting game to see how long it takes. Is there anything else, Sean, that I need to know, or Sarah?
Helen Devon.
That's about it? All right.
And just so you know, she's taken Matt Hogan, who accepted this resignation before, so she's qualified for GLP.
That's right.
And she'll get the test.
Just like that.
She already took it.
Oh, you're right. So we're just waiting on the scores. Yep.
Is $95 the number?
$95 for an extended leave sub.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
So welcome, Sarah. Stand up so they can see what you look like. There she is. Welcome, Sarah. Item six, appoint summer bus attendant that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Peter Belgian be appointed as a summer bus attendant at $9 per hour, and Deborah Barton be appointed as a summer bus attendant and her contracted rate.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Are either of you here, Peter or Deborah?
I know Deborah's not.
Okay. All right. Well, welcome to Peter and Deborah. Moving on, item C, approve MOU for field hockey aid that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a memorandum of understanding for a field hockey aid position for the 2016-17 school year be approved.
Second.
Discussion?
So the recommendation coming from Marissa Felicaro, our AD, is that there not be a JV team. This is due to low enrollment in JV. And so what we have done in the past is to create a modified and a varsity team, so basically seven through nine and 10 through 12. Last year, I know the coach was very excited, as were the kids, because there were more kids on the field, and they thought that that was really great. So to have a second set of eyes, just because there are two teams, this is the recommendation for this aid position. This is an MOU, and the second year retrying it, although it's only for one year.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Approve bus use for Eden Boys and Girls Club. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation via school bus or buses be approved for the Eden Boys and Girls Club summer field trips.
Second.
Discussion?
They're paying for that?
Mm-hmm. They pay it at the rate.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Approve transfer from 2014 capital reserve. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, a transfer from the 2014 capital reserve fund to the general fund to allow for use of capital reserves in the amount of $2 million be approved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Is that our friend? Is that Mr.?
If you want to do it now.
Did he just walk in? Yeah. So Mr. Polino walked in? We were quick, weren't we? See, you're used to us going a really long time. So if you could just stand up, sir, the board can see what you look like. This is Dan, and they approved you. So congratulations and welcome. Congratulations. All right, approve appropriations increase. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2016-17 appropriations be increased by $33.01 to $29,369,264.23 to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained. Motion carried.
Right now is the time for public statements from individuals and groups. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status, for example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Going once?
If you would.
Three times?
All right, moving on. Item eight, information and proposals from administration and staff. So we will do the shared decision-making compact for learning with Ms. Grimaldi, but we will not be doing number two with Ms. LaRosa. We're going to move that most likely into later in the summer or early in the fall. Hi, Kelly.
Hi.
Thanks for being here. So just while Kelly is doing that, Kelly was the bravest person this year to brave to take on the district's shared decision-making team as its, what do you call yourself, the facilitator?
Correct.
Okay, as a coordinator or facilitator. She's done some wonderful things since then, and so we're really thrilled that she's here to show you what is a mandated document for the district, and I'll let her explain the rest of it.
The first page is just the current district level, the members of the current district level here today. Okay, so I am Kelly Grimaldi. I'm an exceptional education teacher at the elementary school, and I just finished my third year with the district. I'm currently teaching the summer program, which we also have at the elementary school. In January, I joined the district level shared decision-making team as the facilitator. And today, I am here to present to you the suggested updates made in the compact for learning, which if you're unfamiliar with this document, is the bylaws for this meeting. So to give you a little bit of background on shared decision-making, it is Commissioner's Regulation 100, which requires every district in the state to have an official plan for the participation of parents and teachers, school-based planning and shared decision-making. The purpose is to improve the educational performance of all students through a process of collaboration with administrators, teachers, and all community stakeholders. So the district is also required to submit a review of this plan every two years. And in January, the district level team began the review process. So we have a district level shared decision-making team, and there is also a committee in each of the three buildings as well. So the district team began the review process. We took a look at the previous compact for learning, and we also looked at the compact for learning from surrounding districts. We then made some changes to our compact, and those updates were then presented to each of the building committees, with the exception of the GLP, which is being presented to them in the fall at their first meeting. Now I'm going to take a look at the changes to you. So if you want to take a look, all of the changes are in red. We need some very simple language here. We took out some words, and we added a section on motion of wellness of children. On page four, we also changed the size, the recommended size of the district level team to reduce it to three teachers and three support staff members. Previous year, both five, but we currently do not need that suggestion. It is an open committee. Anybody who would like to join is able to join, so this is just a recommendation. And then the largest change is going to be on page five to page six. We added a very specific purpose and responsibility statement. So if you look at page six, each building level team is being asked to formally submit two goals, which will be referred to as the school improvement plan. The building level goals will support the district goals if you add support of education right. And I like to think of it as the criteria for those goals. So we have these larger district goals, and how are we going to meet them? How is each building individually going to help achieve those goals? We would now be able to look at the school improvement plan, which is submitted by the shared decision-making team. The progress of these goals is then submitted to the district level committee, and we will communicate with the Department of Education on the progress of those goals. We also included a suggested timeline for the school improvement plan, and in the appendix will find a sample for that each building level team is able to use if they choose. So we've got a lot of information.
Could you just...
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, could you back up for a minute? And when you really think about shared decision-making, what in your mind, especially because you're a newer facilitator at it, is your hope from this committee? What's the hope? What do you hope that it does?
I hope that this building, because the people who are on those individual shared decision-making teams know their building so well, they're able to keep in mind the needs of their building and take a look at the goals they present as a district, and then they can find ways, like I said, to help achieve those goals. And then the larger district level team has those community stakeholders on them who are also able to express their interest in what they believe are the needs of the school and how we can work to achieve those goals as well.
That makes sense. So the board's going to be on retreat next week. It's amazing that it's next week already, to determine the district goals for next year. Now granted, some of them from the past year or two will remain the same or be tweaked some. Is there anything in particular that you've heard in any of the conversations at shared decision-making that you hope that they would focus on?
I also wanted to ask Mr. Shepherd.
Yeah.
I think you share as well, because you are also on the district level team, with what you feel we have expressed interest in. I know we have talked a little bit about with the updates being made to the district, doing a time-cancel project.
I love that idea. That would be fun.
And the PTA just gave us some funding for their project.
That's great. I'm glad you brought that up.
That's what I'm hoping we can live off the top.
No, I think that's great. And if I remember from some of the meetings that I attended, too, is it was being able to bring things from shared decision-making to the board so that the board could get that full experience of all the stakeholders that are on shared decision-making and use it in some of their decisions. That's, to me, what I would hope, too.
I think these new updates really help as well. I mean, a clear statement of purpose and responsibilities that was missing from this compact before also helped.
I appreciate you taking, I appreciate you taking the lead to update it. Yeah. Paul, anything you've said on it, can we...
No.
Okay. Thank you. We appreciate you coming out. Now, time for the superintendent's report. So if you were up at 6:45 this morning and you had NPR on, you would have heard three of our students speaking about the Student Voices project that they just finished at Eden. It's also up on WBFO's website online. They spoke, it was on, it aired twice, once at 6:45 and once at 8:45. I know Jeff, you sat and listened to it with Kathy Klop, right? The kids did a great job. Yeah, you heard it, too. I was really, really impressed with how well-spoken they were. And Eileen Buckley, who did the interview, shoves this giant microphone in your face, which is very disconcerting, and the kids didn't blink an eye. And so Gabby Rohauer, Angelia Legrosso, and Kelsey Pressing were all there and did a great job on the interview and will very likely be helping us create, and Lucinda's very excited about it as well, a district plan for technology that includes students on the committee so that we can utilize them in the social media policy that the board recently adopted and in moving forward with our technology infrastructure since they're so close to it. So I'd encourage everybody to listen to that interview while it's up online, because the kids did a really great job. The second piece is the graduation ceremonies. Kudos to Jeff Servoni and to everyone else who runs the graduation ceremonies. The kids looked great. They were really professional, as they always are. It wasn't super hot, so the kids were quite attentive. And the speeches by the students and by Jeff and by everybody else who spoke were really, really, very good. and by Jeff and by everybody else who spoke were really, really, very good. Of the graduating class for 2016, there were 130 students who did graduate, there were four who did not, and it certainly wasn't by any lack of trying on the administrative and the teachers' parts. They offered them all kinds of opportunities at the end of the school year, especially to catch up, make up, get it done, and some kids do it, and some just are not ready to leave us. And so, those four students will have the opportunity to come back and spend another year with us if they choose. This gives us a 97% graduation rate. Of that 97% graduate and 130 students, we have 39% of them with an advanced or an honors diploma. We have 81% of them committed to going to a two- or a four-year college, three of them to the military, and 21 of them straight into employment. When I asked Jeff this morning if he could, if he could really pinpoint what might be some of the issues they get in kids' ways of not graduating, it's just that they're just not willing to commit to that hard push that they need to. I think that's where we came to, and that you can start to see the slide in the motivation and the attendance along the way, but it's certainly not that they couldn't have pushed forward if they wanted to. And I know from my own experience, sometimes they're just not ready to go out into the world yet, they just want to come back. So, Jeff will welcome them back, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
Do we know if those four are coming back? Or are they going to summer school?
Do you recommend summer school to anybody who, where summer school can help them graduate in August? If they don't, then we ask if they will come back.
They have not officially dropped out. Am I right? Yeah.
They have.
Right.
Have any of them signed up for summer school?
I mean?
Did any of them sign up for summer school?
I think two of the four did at Frontier, and we're also working with Lake Shore's social programs to, so that's another option we have this year, which is due across the summer.
Thank you, Jeff, again, nice job.
Yeah, thank you.
Very nice job. The Office of the State Comptroller has notified us that we are up for an audit. It's no big surprise, since the last audit that the district received was in 2011, and prior to that, around 2008. When OSC comes to do an audit, they come to find something, so we certainly expect them to be looking rather hard for the next couple of months. They will come in and do a pre-meeting with us, I think it's tomorrow, just to take a look, just to let us know what to expect. It's not new, although it is, it is new for both Tom and I to be in front of an OSC audit, so we'll keep you updated on that. In addition, I recently had a conversation with Jack Cudahy as the president of the All Sports Boosters regarding the funding for Modified Lacrosse. As you may know, the district does fund both Varsity and JV Lacrosse, and has for a number of years, but it does not fund Modified Lacrosse. According to our conversation and the recollection of other members of the All Sports Boosters, there was a plan in place prior to 2007 for the district to fund all three levels, one of them including Modified. The history of it is basically that the first year the Boosters took on Varsity, and then the district took it on the following year. That same year, Boosters took on JV, and then the following year, the district took on JV. At the same time, Boosters picked up Modified with the full intention that around, somewhere around 2008, that the district would pick up Modified as it had the other two teams. But that's not what happened. Whether it is because of the GEA and the lack of state funding coming at that time, if there was something else that happened, I can't find any records to show. The Boosters has spoken in front of the school board in the past requesting full funding for Modified Lacrosse. Boosters is once again requesting that the district pick up funding for the coaches, so this would be a compromise on their part. The cost for the 16-17 school year would be approximately $5,362. This is not the full funding, it's for the Modified Lacrosse, it would be only for the coaches. This funding would increase each year, since the coaches are paid on step. The Boosters is also asking the district to forgive their $3,000 balance from the 2015-16 school year. So, Jack, is there anything I should have said that I did not?
I think that covers the whole story, other than the feeling that for a decade now, one group of parents has been asked to fundraise, not only for their uniforms and for their equipment, the school doesn't provide any sticks, helmets, cleats, uniforms. Most of the nets are actually provided for, to the school from the lacrosse club funding, and not from the school. And it's about time that that group of parents is offered some relief.
Can you, can you back up for a moment and just talk about how it's funded within the club? Because you talk about lacrosse club, not All Sports Booster, so how is that different?
Yeah, it took me a few years to figure that out. So, the school program is Modified, JV, Varsity, girls and boys, but there's also a club program that started out, I was proud to be a part of that in its inception, when it was part of the Hamburg Knights Lacrosse program, and the Eden Lacrosse program broke away from the Hamburg Knights, I want to say, six or seven years ago. And so, that is a youth program that has started with, from roughly five-year-olds, now all the way up to 17-year-olds, and is now grown to include the girls program, which started, I think, two years ago. And maybe Don can clarify some of those numbers, because his daughter's, I just saw.
If you want to go see a game, there's a Modified game going on right now, we can catch the second half, if we wrap up here in about 10 minutes. But roughly, there's three club programs right now, a Varsity, a Modified, and a below Modified, I think it's 10 and under, and there's roughly 20 girls on each team.
So, that's 60 girls, and there's easily 100 boys. Many, many of the former players come back and coach the summer program, and so they do their own separate fundraising, they charge for uniforms, they do their own separate fundraising. And many sports, whether it be swimming or football, count on a successful youth program to grow their sport into a successful high school program, and essentially, that's the feeder program. It also keeps many of the lacrosse players playing as close to year-round as possible. So, there's, let's call it 150 to 200, boys and girls playing summer lacrosse here in Eden. We also get some kids from other school districts who don't, whose area don't have a club program. And that, that club program is immensely successful. They have donated in the past all of the Modified uniforms, they donated many of the net, many of the nets that go on the back of the nets, and some of the metal cages they've donated over the years.
To the district?
To the district. I'm not certain that it's necessarily a straight donation, or they just let them use them, because their program doesn't start until after the school program ends.
Is the lacrosse club part of All Sports Boosters?
No.
No.
Separate organization.
Okay, got it.
Is it part of Edentown Rec?
It is part of Edentown Rec.
Okay, so that's a great question.
Go to edenlax.com, it's their website.
Okay, okay.
And so, so, it's an extremely successful sport, it's the, girls lacrosse supposedly is the fastest-growing high school sport in the nation, followed closely by boys lacrosse, and we were very, very fortunate to have got involved in lacrosse 10 years ago, and the numbers are, you know, by any measure, wins and losses, participation, kids going on to play college lacrosse, any measure, they're both very successful programs. And again, my, my request is that, that the school at least partially fund, and give some relief to these parents who have been fundraising, you know, for, for the full decade, well over $100,000, probably much more than that.
What was the $3,000?
I was asked for the board to consider relieving the Sports Boosters of their donation of 3,000 this year. So, while we do not bill boosters, they donate.
For this coming year?
This current year, 15-16.
So, the past year, there was a need to donate monies so that the coaches could be paid, and that was done back in, I think it was April. So, it was $5,400 that we donated to the school to cover the coaches' salary. There's additional monies for transportation and for officials that we would normally donate. We purchased uniforms for all through three sports programs this past season, which cost somewhere in the area of $15,000, because the kids didn't have matching uniforms, and some of them were kind of a yellow as opposed to a white, and so.
Well water?
Yeah, exactly.
Did Boosters donate or purchase the touchpads for the pool this year as well?
They did.
Can you talk about that for me?
A portion of that, so, so, monies, monies were donated from the Dolphins, the now defunct Dolphins, and Boosters received.
So, what was left in their account?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
And the Boosters were approached, which didn't cover the entire, I'll say upgrades, but they were really needed, needed equipment, replacing equipment that didn't work, and...
Yeah, I remember that with the conversation, Colleen.
The girls team also helped in the uniform.
So, the girls swim team?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the girls swim team paid for a portion, and then the Boosters picked up the remainder, and that's essentially, under my watch, which is now three years, that's essentially what the Boosters tries to do, when teams are in need, when there's need for equipment. We typically, we typically don't fund trips or cool warm-ups, we typically try to fund hard goods that can be used for an extended period of time, and that's what we try to help with.
Thank you.
It is truly my pleasure that we have the money, because of all the fundraising we've done over the last 12 or 15 years that the Booster's been around.
Jack, one of the conversations, or one of the topics that I, that I asked you in the conversation is why, why Sports Boosters felt that the non-funding of Modified was unfair and unjust? Because there are other teams that, that Boosters does fund, but there's no request for those. So, why Lacrosse?
Well, it's really the timeframe in which Lacrosse has gone unfunded. The wrestling program recently added a Modified team last year, and at some point, maybe funding is such that they become, you know, there's a request made, but it's only been one year, and so, the Lacrosse program has been raising money for at least a decade now, and that's two athletic directors and three superintendents, and it's, and it's really, it's essentially the same families, and they sell tickets and they do all kinds of fundraising, but the reality is that the majority of that fundraising is coming from the same people, grandma and grandpa, writing checks to do that, and no other sports program has had to do that. While we fund baseball, and volleyball, and field hockey, and softball, and on and on and on, football, etc., we fund all of those modified programs as we should. We do not fund Modified Lacrosse, nor have we for a decade. And so, it's really a cumulative effect that I would suggest, now's the time, several years ago was the time, but with budget constraints and the challenges, and they haven't, not much has changed, but, but in all honesty, enough's enough, you know, we, and when Ms. Anzalone and I had a conversation, the conversation was somewhat of a compromise to say, okay, you pay for your, if the school could possibly, out of the general fund, and not out of the school budget, or the sports budget, because there's no money in the sports budget, out of the general fund, could pay for the coaches, which are essentially employees of the district, the Lacrosse program would continue to work hard to raise money, and pay for the refs, and pay for the transportation. With obviously the hope that someday that is resolved also, but, but, it's, it's hard for me as a board member to sit up here and make cuts, and then, you know, say we should do this in addition to, when we're already cutting other things. It certainly weighs heavily on me personally. But, but the reality is that we're taxing one group of families, while other families do not bear that same burden.
And the participation rate in Lacrosse is one of the highest, lacrosse for both boys and girls.
Yeah, it's, it's somewhere around 140 participants across boys and girls, and so it is the largest sport in Eden. And truly, based on the numbers that the U-10s and the U-8s are showing, it's going nowhere but up. They're, they're really big teams.
Okay. Other discussion or questions?
I mean, have we heard any forecasts for the football team this year?
Not yet. Haven't heard anything negative nor positive. So, my guess is that they're at exactly the same place that they were two years ago, which is running around 23, 24. We managed at 23, 24 for a very long time, and were successful. I mean, we, we won games. So, we were approached by Lake Shore, because Lake Shore was having trouble with their team having enough, but in order for us to say yes to Lake Shore, we would have had to become an A-team, and so, an A-league, and that is not what we were interested in. We, I think Lake Shore felt that, because they helped us out last year, that there should be a little bit of quid pro quo to, to help them out, but not at the expense of our students' health and safety, and so we said no. Plus, we're trying to grow our own. And, and there was a very good statement, and I'm not sure if it was Jack or Don who said it, that when you start to grow kids from a club level small, which is what our football teams are trying to do with North Collins, you see the numbers come back up again. And also, merging with North Collins has been very helpful, and this is our third year doing that.
The meeting with Marissa today, she seemed really positive about it, and I think she said five more were coming from North Collins.
That would make sense to me.
Additional five more, so, it looks like it's going to be pretty strong from what she said.
It's gonna be good.
And they did have a pretty successful flag football program, so they get the younger kids out playing sport, and from a Booster perspective, it doesn't matter what sport, as long as they're playing.
Just as they're playing.
Just as long as that sport is not Madden, if that sport is not on the television, and it's actually on a field somewhere, that we're thrilled. And so, if they, if it's football, and the, some of the coaches are being very proactive and trying to recruit from North Collins, and try to get our younger kids playing the sport, and from our perspective, that's awesome.
It's a good idea. So, my question as a superintendent is, what would you like, as a board, what would you like me to do with this request?
Well, I would say, once Tom gets back to run the numbers, and, you know, since the budget's been approved and, and such, and do we have money for that? And if we don't, what do we cut out to make money for that? So, that's, that's what I would have Tom do in an analysis of.
And the other thing I would, that I would think about is, if we do take it on, what happens in the next couple of budget sessions? Because you brought it up already, we're making cuts in other areas, and, you know, unfortunately, we don't see anything but red ahead of us, you know, we're talking a million, a million and a half already for next year in the hole. If we take it on, and then we have to cut it, what happens? Because of funding, not because of the number of students, I understand the participation will be there, but, you know.
Yeah, my, my conversation was to give those parents some relief, and if that relief is for a year, then I would be very disappointed, but we live in a real world, and we, we make very, very challenging and heart-wrenching decisions, and so, but if we're able to do it for a year, that is some relief, and if we're able to do it for many years, that would be terrific, and in my opinion, the right thing to do. However, if, you know, we can't cut math, so that we can have Modified Lacrosse, I mean, it's...
I think some students will argue with you.
Do the numbers on the field, yes.
As a parent, I would have a hard time cutting academics and funding this. So, the request and the conversation was some relief for a year with the under, and because it's not coming from the sports budget, it's coming from the general fund, and in years down the road, we would, we would simply have to revisit it, and I am aware of it, and, you know, certainly disappointed that this is where we are, but that's the reality.
So, so...
It would be coming from the general fund for one year.
One year. So, so my question is, is if in fact, especially because there isn't a JV Modified, or JV Field Hockey, if in fact, Marissa does have some of the funds in the athletic budget, is there a reason why, why the general fund is what's coming forward in your mind, and not the athletic budget?
In my many, many, many conversations with Marissa regarding the sports budget, it's, quite frankly, cut to the bone. And, and so, my concern is, it gives me no joy to cut, to have Modified Lacrosse funded, and at the cost of less funding for volleyball, or field hockey, or name the sport, it doesn't, you know, helping these kids and costing these kids is, you know, or helping these parents and costing these parents is not the goal. The goal, certainly if there were additional funds there, then, then that's where the money should come from, but, you know, my understanding of my many conversations with Marissa is that there's, there's not even money to buy, you know, volleyballs, and volleyball nets, and lacrosse balls, and footballs, etc. I mean, there's just not.
Okay. So, let me just ask a clarifying question to the board. I will bring this to Tom when he gets back and have him run the numbers. If in fact, he can speak to it at the August 10th board meeting, would you like it to be a motion on the table?
If the numbers are on, we should have it.
I'm just concerned also with the different organizations, like Music Boosters, are they going to come here next? And, you know, I think it...
My, my respectful answer would be, if, if they fund a program for a decade, then, then I think the school should certainly listen to that conversation. then I think the school should certainly listen to that conversation.
Okay. Anything else? Yes? Okay. Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn then? Mike Breeden, you're in a new seat.
I am enjoying the view.
It's very different. Were you there, honestly, were you there for five, four, five years?
In this position?
In that seat.
He was here for three.
I was there for three, at least.
The same as Moyn. They were elected at the same time.
Same time.
We were just regular old board members.
Oh, it was a four. It was four years.
You might have four.
It was four years.
No, because it was Steve...
Two years of Steve and Pinker.
Pinker. And then you took over.
Yeah.
Okay, so you, you've moved seats before.
Yes, actually, I was in this seat initially.
Wow.
Yeah.
Is that where Barb wants you, too?
She can place me wherever she wants.
Kathy has the seating chart.
It's not seen as chromatic yet.
You know, we don't want to make too much change.
Is Mike Breeden in the right place?
Send this whole board into chaos.
Yeah, Mike's in the right place.
Well, Don, you're in the wrong spot. Where am I supposed to be? All right.
All right, then. I'm good, John.
Okay. Future dates, the next Board of Ed meeting is Wednesday, August 10th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. The next regular Board of Education meeting, August 31st, 7:00 p.m. in the junior, senior high school cafeteria.
So, does anybody on the board know for a fact that they're not going to be here on either one of those two days? I'm looking to see if we have a quorum.
August 31st might be a problem.
The 10th, I will not be here.
Anybody else?
You will be here, because you just have the fair.
Okay.
Because you're going to the fair?
Anybody else?
Oh, he's working the fair.
Oh, that's right, that's right. He, he's a Mountie.
Yes.
At the fair.
The Iron Mountie. Don't come after me.
Everybody else okay?
I'm good.
Okay? All right, we're good.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right, chamber.
Aye.
Opposed, stay in motion.
Good job.
It's like a race. It's like a...